For which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, our first order of business actually is to move to some closed sessions. And the, for the audience, so the audience can need to read what these closed sessions will be. Looking to Mr. Conant, does he believe that we can call both sessions at one time or do I need to reschedule?
I'll defer to Mr. Walls because he's taking the lead on this, these two matters.
Alright, so we'll be closing, we're going to deal with a couple of, uh, issues. The first one is closed session to discuss J. Webb versus Olmsted County. File number five five dash C V dash T Q dash G three four seven. The second closed session that we'll hold is a closed session to discuss Hugh Hart Smith versus Olmsted County. Uh, issue, I don't have a quick outline of that. Um, you will recess immediately, um, I believe we're gonna move to have this be number two. And don't expect it'll be very long, um, but we will be back right here and we'll call the recess now. And the, brother back, they were in the war. Going right into this brother. Our closed sessions are over. Uh, we are now going to resume our meeting and we'll start with the consent agenda. Our intent is, is to accept January second, twenty twenty four, ten hundred minutes. To approve the recycling partnership plan for recycling, including the capacity of the, you know, children's recovery facility. To approve according to Friday old track number fifty nine. To approve the chaplain's account for the services agreement. Even to appoint Ali Hatton Gilbert to the public health services advisory board. And to accept how the tools commercial back to store options, but for have a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion prevails. Now we're going to move to discussion items and decision items approving the twenty twenty four health housing and human services purchase service agreements. Uh, as Mr. Gransey comes forward, I just want to call out that we did spend quite a bit of time today in the health housing and human services committee with point of in detail. Uh, the presentation is going to give us again this evening. And, uh, want to express appreciation to the staff, the, the narrative that they've been giving us on these purchase and service agreements. And with the intention of, of, uh, in the future, providing more, more specific data around units of services and so on. But I think you'll find, those of you who didn't have the opportunity earlier today, you'll find the presentation informative to, to review some of our major contracts. And, uh, the variety of ways that we contract for services, so, Mr. Gransey, floor is yours.
Thank you Chair Kuskaden, commissioners, my name is Travis Gransey, I'm a deputy county administrator. Uh, as Commissioner Kuskaden has described, we did review this, uh, information in some detail. I don't know if four of you were present earlier today at the health housing and human service committee meeting. So I won't go through it quite at the pace that we did earlier, but please pause and ask questions. Um, as Commissioner Kuskaden had mentioned, we did provide, uh, summary, uh, information for you. You, basically, just a few sentences or a paragraph in regards to the majority of the purchase of service contracts. That we have in health, housing and human services. Uh, so you have that information contained within the packet. Um, as Commissioner Kuskaden also mentioned, our intent will be to continue to, um, add additional information to that. And make any changes kind of on an ongoing basis to make sure that we've also got some data in there. Uh, so that you, uh, can see the impact, uh, of those investments. In that forum today, I'm not going to be reviewing all of those, uh, purchase service contracts. The ones that we're going to highlight are just the ones, uh, for Families First and, uh, some of the ones for Family Service Rochester. The, the purchase service contracts that we're going to review here tonight are just in the child and family services department, so. And that other document is more extensive than that, it covers a lot, it covers a number of more, let's see here, if I can get this to move. Where should I point it? Oh, thank you. So the first, uh, purchase service contracts that I'll cover here are, are two contracts with Families First of Minnesota. It is a child welfare contract, uh, the parent support and outreach program and the crisis nur- nursery and case management. Uh, the parent support and outreach program is actually a program that, uh, cascades across the state of Minnesota. It's really a, an opportunity to provide case management that's more short term and it's voluntary. It's typically viewed as an early intervention program, uh, and really the intent is to, uh, try to keep people out of deeper end services in the child protection system. This second program, uh, and the second contract here is with Crisis Nursery. Uh, we talked a little bit about this, um, at the human services committee meeting. And, and the one thing to note is that the demand for this service has gone up over the past few years. Uh, generally, we've got, uh, a pot of money set aside to provide these crisis nur- nursery services. And in the last couple of years, towards the end of the year, we've run out of that pot. And we've actually then reinvested some additional dollars in some other underspent areas. So we did increase that contract this year too. Uh, you'll see on the slide in front of you, uh, there was a contract increase, uh, from three hundred and thirty four thousand for, for all of those programs then. Uh, to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year. We've been trying to build in a bit of an increase for all of our contracts, at least o- over the last couple of years. We've paid attention to this, recognizing that many of our providers bear the same burdens that we do as it goes to increased expenses, whether it's wages. Uh, whether it's your electric bill, um, or your computers, I mean. So we have tried to acknowledge that they have those increased expenses, just like we do, and we need to help them meet that. The next contracts we'll talk a little bit about are a few of the contracts that we, um, still have with the Family Service Rochester. Uh, the first one here is our Family Access Center and the supervised parenting time. The majority, uh, of this service is provided to folks that are involved in our child protection and or child welfare systems. Uh, where we are actually, um, supervising visitation and generally speaking, it's, um. A- as a result of a court order, that the court orders that, um, one of the parents. Um, or a parent can have contact with their children as long as it's supervised for a period of time. And then the job of the staff is to observe those, um, interactions and then report back to the court. That's generally how that goes. The majority of these occur at the twenty one seventeen building, we've got space for that, they do off hours so that they're doing some in the evenings, they do some on the weekends. Uh, it's a good service, um, and it's one that Family Service Rochester's been providing for a period of time, so. They also do supervised parenting exchanges, meaning we're in a shared custody situation. Um, and, uh, sometimes when we're, um, you know, I'm passing my son along to his mom. If those haven't gone well, we'll set up these parent exchanges then too, where that's, um, a supervised setting, so. That is the service we're talking about here. The Family Access Center, you'll see a increase to that contract in addition to the supervised parenting time. Again, for some of the similar reasons we had talked about, uh, just with these general increases. The other thing that I'll mention, excuse me, as it relates to the Family Service Rochester contracts. Is to, is to rewind us a few months when we were having the, uh, conversations about Family Service Rochester. Uh, and, uh, moving the child welfare targeted case management and the children's mental health targeted case management in-house. When we made that decision, we also factored in an assumption that Family Service Rochester be requesting some additional funding in some of their other contracts to help cover some of that overhead. So what you see here is not only an increase, um, as a result of just kind of that, that general, uh, cost of living increase. But also, um, some of those increases that we had discussed at that time as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge, and, and this was brought up at the committee earlier today too, that some of these contracts seem to have increased by a, a significant amount. I'd say that, um, we all, we all feel like we landed in a pretty good spot, and by we all, I mean, um, Olmsted County staff, including our finance staff and Family Service Rochester with these increases this year, so. Uh, next I'll mention the family based services and the collaborative intensive bridging. Uh, this is a program that was developed, uh, not too long ago, but several years ago here in Olmsted County. There's a few other counties that are, uh, providing this service, it's really, um. In short, uh, a way that we're attempting to avoid longer term out of home placements for kids. By providing intense in-home services for both the youth and their family. Uh, it's been a really successful model, uh, and it's actually, uh, there are several other counties, maybe I already said that, that have actually, um. Or have designed a similar service and Family Service Rochester is actually doing it for a couple of other counties as well, so. It's a program, as I mentioned, that we invested in to hopefully reduce out of home placements and it's, it's proven to do that, so. Uh, so there's that kind of bucket, uh, the CIB supervision, uh, uh, collaborative intention bridging services, if I haven't defined the acronym already. Um, so those are those contracts. Uh, next up, the family engagement, engagement strategies and the family involvement strategies. Uh, these are, um, intervention strategies really that are around facilitation. Uh, Family Service Rochester provides really a independent third party, um. Planners that come in and bring all the stakeholders that are involved in these child protection and child welfare cases into the same room. And facilitate discussions where we come up with safety plans and case plans. Uh, having an outside, uh, party, um, facilitate those meetings has proven really invaluable for all of our social workers. Um, this is one of the services, I think I mentioned earlier too, that if there was one thing that we said, hey, we're not going to be able to do this anymore. Um, our social workers would put this at the bottom of the list. Um, like, we have to continue to do this because it's been so effective, um, as a way to engage families in a different way. So that's a sizable contract, you'll see that here, um, and, and as I mentioned, it's also been an invaluable service, so. Uh, Commissioner Senjam actually asked earlier today if this was a mandated service, it is not. Uh, but it is one that we feel like the investment has been, uh, it's been worth, it's been worth it for us, so. Uh, last, uh, is the father project. Uh, this is a program that Family Service Rochester has operated for the last several years. Um, it's kind of the second rendition, and we talked about this a little bit in the health housing and human service committee meeting, but. There used to be the dads program that did similar work in, in Olmsted County. That went away and we didn't have a, a program focused on dads or fathers for a number of years. Uh, some grant money became available to Family Service Rochester. And then we, um, supplement their budget for this program with the, uh, purchase of service contract that we provide. So it really works with, um, fathers of children that are involved in, uh, some part of our system. Uh, and the child is receiving service in some other part of our system. Um, and as it mentions here, working with the underemployed or the unemployed fathers in addition to doing skills work with these, these fathers too, so. Uh, you'll see a slight increase to that contract as well. So with that, that is the end of my formal presentation, I'll stand for any questions.
Will, will you say the average increase is ten, twelve percent?
Uh, yeah, the average on these, on the Family Service Rochester ones, I would say are probably in that ballpark. Um, you know, it depends on program area, we had talked a little bit about this too earlier, but, uh, generally we were. A- as far as all of our purchase of service contracts this year, uh, we, uh, built into the budget a five percent increase. Um, and some, then, uh, in the fall, when we send out letters to all of the contracted providers and they respond to that. Uh, some of them might ask for a fifteen percent increase and some of them might ask for a two percent increase. Uh, so then, given that kind of five percent target, uh, we just work, all of our staff work with the providers that are providing the service and we just. Uh, try to figure out how we're going to make that balance then. So the overall increase with all of our purchase of service contracts stayed within that five percent target.
Okay.
In addition to that one hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we had talked about through this FSR transition. So that, yep, even though the ones that you saw here today might have been higher, we stayed within that. Uh, when we negotiated all these contracts then.
Thank you.
Um, one of the things we talked about this morning was that a lot of the Family Service Rochester contracts and, and Zumba Valley contracts and so on. We, we tend to think about serving our lowest income residents, but these family supports and services are really available to anyone who needs them. And, um, especially since counties have the responsibility for doing the child support and the child protection work, those are not income related. Um, they're sort of available, uh, when, when, when the family circumstance needs it. And that sometimes sounds a little confusing, uh, uh, confusing for us. Mr. Gransey, one of the things we talked about this morning, the, the committee and I maybe should have asked you to, to, uh, refresh the data, maybe Ms. Welsh knows. Um, you remind us, it would be helpful to be reminded, um, Heidi, of what the authorization is, what takes a board approval, what, what our department heads. Have the approval to approve on their own and what is sort of automatic, you, you probably have that right at the top of mind.
Madam Chair, commissioners, there, it depends on what we're purchasing, honestly, and there's different limits. But, um, generally it's about seventy five thousand for a purchase of service, I believe. Um, but it's a little more complicated than that, so we'll get you the policy. We, we actually put it in the board packet every time we go through bills. So, um, I will make sure that you get a copy of that so that you, and we can put it in Friday report maybe, just to make sure you have an easy way to know, okay, if it's this amount, then we sign it below. But if it's this amount, it goes to board. There's always a caveat that, you know, if it's something politically sensitive or something for some reason that I feel like you ought to approve, some other reason. It's, sometimes you get things in front of you for reasons other than that dollar amount policy is what I'm trying to say, so we'll try to be clear about that too.
Thank you. And a lot of these things do not require us to take bids, I mean, it's really based on what we determine the service needs are. Or a community agency sees the need and approaches us about, we see this need in the community and we could do this service and it can be. It's not like it has to go through a, a request for proposal process on every one of these items, right?
It, it doesn't, on the ones that we've historically done, now if we wanted to, um, implement a new program or add a new service, I mean, those would be conversations we'd be bringing through the. Through the committee then and back through board and through our budget process, but in this case, uh, the services that, you know, these purchase service contracts you're approving here tonight. Um, they've been ones that we've done for years and at some point, there was a decision made that we were going to add this program or service.
Thank you.
Um, maybe the other thing, Commissioner, if I could, just in regards to the RFP process, no, we don't generally do that every year. Um, we have, from time to time though, uh, put an RFP back out for a service that we've, you know, um, received from. Uh, a particular provider for a number of years, uh, just to make sure that we're staying competitive, but we don't always do that. Generally speaking, in Olmsted County, for a lot of these services anyway, there's only, there's only one provider, um, so we do see that as well.
Mr. Senjam.
Uh, thank you Madam Chair, uh, Madam Chair, we can continue discussion, I would, uh, I would move the, uh, resolution twenty four. Describing the twenty, two thousand twenty four purchase, uh, for service agreements that, uh, Mr. Gransey has described.
Second. Second. I didn't hear it called out, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Rick, any further discussion about these, the set of purchase service contracts?
Madam, just, just a comment, I, I asked this afternoon when we were talking about this, uh. Uh, about doing, any, any, any board member doing sort of a, what may I call it, right along with some of these programs and, uh. I didn't know about the privacy issues and so on, but that's workable and, and, uh, I intend to, to ride along in some fashion along a couple of these programs, just to understand them better. Probably not a bad idea for a lot of us.
So we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion prevails. And thanks for the detailed, uh, work as well, so. I, I think I counted in this packet, there were like fifteen different agencies and I'm sure there's many, many more that we partner with in addition to our appropriations agencies and so on. So now we're going to get an update, um, and an overview of the progress on the groundwater protection and soil health initiative. By our Olmsted Soil and Water Conservation District, welcome gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, I'm Skip Langer with Olmsted Soil and Water Conservation District, I'm the Soil Conservation Manager here. And I'm with Martin Larson, our Soil Conservation Technician with Olmsted SWCD as well. Um, we wanted to just get an opportunity to get in front of you again, it's been a while since we've seen the whole board to discuss the groundwater protection soil health program. And so, um, we're a year in, um, and it was an exciting year, so, um, we have some news to share, I guess, about the. Um, the progress that has been made and, and just to provide, uh, I think a summary to you all, um, on the investment that you. Um, you approved, and so I think we can move on to the, oh, I can do it, okay, hey, that works good. Down, over there, okay.
It's still not working.
There you go.
Alright, technology, so, um, I guess, you know, it was probably, uh, May twenty twenty one when Commissioners. Tyne and Wright and myself and Martin and some others on our Soil and Water Conservation District staff. Uh, sat in our conference room over at twenty one twenty two and just had a discussion about, you know, what could we do to, um. Think about the issues with nitrate in groundwater and to come forward with a program that could help to curb that. Upward trend in nitrate, um, in our, in, in private drinking water wells, and so. Um, we talked a lot and we wrote on the whiteboards a lot and we came up with, I think, some, some great ideas that developed over time. And so in that probably year and a half to two years of time leading up to, um, the approval of some dollars to the ARPA, um, funding. Um, you know, you guys took the dollars into the county to pay for the, the cost of the pandemic. And, and thus, uh, created a pot of reserves, we were able to, um, ask for some of those dollars for a program. You agreed for three million dollars, which was absolutely wonderful. And so, we developed a program, we, we rolled it out with a pilot in fall of twenty two, had fifty two producers sign up, we expected maybe twenty. So with fifty two signing up, we had sixty five hundred ninety eight acres, um, enrolled into our cover crop program, which was fantastic, so. The goal of the program was to, as you can see, improve soil quality, protect groundwater through adoption of sustainable practices. But there's also other benefits such as, uh, the reduction of leaching and nitrate into the ground. Um, also improving the nitrate retention within the plants, um, of the cover crop growth and then, uh, limiting soil erosion, increasing microbiology. There's lots of great benefits to, to the soil health practices. So, we had those fifty two producers sign up, they also enrolled about double that into the program. And so Martin's going to talk a little bit more when he steps up about the, uh, to summarize the twenty twenty three program and what we have going on here in twenty four. Um, we did sign up our, our twenty four, um, first round for cover crops here, just this, in this last fall, but right now the program's closed. We're doing some maintenance on the system, but we do continue to promote, uh, the program through Facebook, social media, news releases. We have, um, soil health events and things like that that are going on as well. Um, so I'm gonna let Martin come up and share a little bit about, uh, the program options and.
Yeah, so when we originally designed it, um, I think most of you are aware, if you're not, that I, I farm as well. Uh, but one thing that I really felt important as, as a, as a farmer was that this design needed to be flexible. So that menu of options was pretty important, uh, right away. Um, so we actually have nine total different options, we're brainstorming a few more, especially in the hay and grazing. Um, but those nine are broken up into three major components, that cover crop, that, uh, small grains or alternative, uh, component. And then the hay and grazing, which those three components, uh, that language has now made its way into the work plan. For the state's response to the EPA, uh, nitrates, um, so it's kind of, you know, the, the most sincere form of flattery is imitation.
Congratulations.
Pack our, pat ourselves on the back for that. Um, so you can see in this slide, you know, the, the cover crops, the small grains, the hay and grazing, right? So this is the twenty twenty three summary, and we have eighty seven producers that participated. Uh, fifty that participated in the cover crops and that certified acres is just under five thousand. Uh, and that was up to twelve inches in height, you know, we, we pay a little bit more to bring that up to twenty four inches in height. But of course, we don't have as many producers taking that option, CC two thousand four hundred there and then so on, I don't have to go through every option, um, there. Uh, but there's a total of five different, uh, menu options in that cover crop. There's the small grains or alternative crops, there's two in there, twenty nine, uh, producers certified two thousand acres, fifty percent had legumes to follow. Additional acres planted, so that was above and beyond our, our signups, was that twelve hundred and sixty eight, and we had some eight in the hay and grazing. We knew that that would be down the totem pole of enrollment, um, just because there isn't as many livestock producers in the county, uh, anymore. Uh, we're cash grain, uh, we can really touch on the top too, if you're a cash grain farmer without, without livestock. Um, so this is what you would expect to see driving around the countryside, um, for farmers enrolled in the program and of course, farmers that aren't. But this is what we are, you know, looking for, uh, that rye cover crop on the left-hand side is in that thirty one inch range. The small grains up on top, uh, there, that would be an oat field probably in mid-June. And then the planting green there down at the bottom, uh, it's a soybean, uh, soybeans going into rye cover crop. Of course, there was challenges this year with the drought, um, and we were a little concerned going into twenty twenty four, what that might hold for us, uh, because it. You know, a lot of cases, we'd say that cover crops had a black eye, but it sure didn't show up in the soil health program. up in the soil health program, that there's a lot of belief in what we're doing as farmers, and those that are engaged are very engaged. And of the eighty-nine plus eighteen plus five here in twenty twenty-four, thirty-two of those producers are brand-new producers that we haven't worked with on a soil health level yet at, in the SWCD. That is, the photo here is actually the tubal land that's adjacent to the landfill, Olmsted County landfill. So that is Olmsted County owned land, and that is the first time, so oats were growing there, followed by a legume cover crop, red clover, and then they hate it. They took the feed off of that. Feed was very important this year. And that was the first time in my recollection that something other than corn and soybeans has been on that farm since my dad farmed it in nineteen eighty-four. So it's been a very long time since something other than corn and soybeans has been there. So the photo here, that would be soybeans planted into winter rye. So I, you know, I like that photo, but really, next to that, on the right-hand side, so we did some modeling, and that's if you took our entire program to date now, and you modeled the amount of nitrate that it saved from groundwater, and converted that into urea, right? So urea is one of the most common applied fertilizers in Olmsted County. It's forty-six percent nitrogen. So that, so the direct, so dollar-for-dollar savings is about three hundred and ten thousand, but we're finding it's almost a two-to-one payback. So if we cost share one acre of cover crops, that producer is growing two acres of cover crops. So that indirect would be twenty-three semi-loads of fertilizer. I like that slide. In the future, of course, I hit on one of it, that our language is already getting put into the state response work plan, even by name, Olmsted County Soil and Water Program, but then also the language within it. We want to continue to grow the program reach, outreach, especially as this heightened awareness in nitrate is in this part of our state. The other counties are looking in on us outside of the state, but actually, the other counties are too. And I know that the farmers, because I'm connected to it, I farm in Maur County, they really want something like this in their county as well, and they're kind of jealous of us. We have presented to the Board of Water and Soil Resources, state and federal legislature, got a chance to be in DC and actually share it in Washington DC as well. So we really hope that some of this makes its way into the farm program as well. Of course, the One Watershed One Plan Groups. And then, as I touched on, the EPA petition increases awareness. So our farmers are engaged. This was last year. I believe it was a February meeting, end of January or February meeting, and we're, we're filling meeting rooms regardless where we go now, which is really important, and I'm glad to see that. So I can open it up to questions for either Skip or I, or comments?
All right. Yeah, I don't have a question, but I, I just want to impress upon the board and anybody that's listening out there, that this wouldn't have been done without some very good people in the Soil and Water Division, Skip and, and yourself, Martin. And one of the reasons why this is so successful is, is that in the presentations that I've been at, is that Mr. Larson farms himself and can answer every question that the farmers have about why this works, and that every, for every counter, our soil and water people have an answer to say, no, this is the facts. This is it. We measure those things. We have data on those things. Mr. Larson keeps very good financial records of his own farm and can tell people that by doing this, your farm can still make money. You can, and, and, and sometimes the crop can come in better than the corn and the soybeans. So I, I think that that's one of the reasons why this works is because Olmsted County is so very good at what it does. And also, I would have to compliment the board on having the foresight to fund five million dollars into this program. So we can't get results unless sometimes we take a chance on a program and a pilot, and this one is showing some very good returns. So if any legislators or federal congresspeople are listening to this, the only way to keep this going is, is that it's going to take money, because I project that Olmsted County will run out of money about in twenty twenty-five, the end of twenty twenty-five. Unless we get some more money for someplace else, we can't continue this project, a very successful project that does exactly what everybody wants it to do, which is to reduce nitrates in the water and to keep our water clean. So thank you very much.
Mr. Sanjum.
Well, I'll echo. I mean, in the early days, Greg and I had ideas and had no knowledge. So we were smart enough to go in front of people that had knowledge, and, and the program you guys came up with is fantastic, and that's getting great buy-in by our community, by our farmers. So I'm very proud of it. I hope others continue to look at it and emulate it, and somehow we come up with funding that we can continue to do it, whether it's federal or state funded, or have to look at ourselves, because we don't want to end it.
Thanks, Martin.
Thank you.
Mr. Rasmussen.
I would just echo the, the kudos in design, and speaking from someone who's married to one of the participants. My husband participated in the program last year. We'll do so again in twenty twenty-four. This program certainly has elevated the discussions that are happening in our county. And one of the key statistics that, that you all spoke to is the number of producers who are now at the table, who you had never interacted with before. That is one of the most important things that we're finally, and something that we commonly say in farming, is we want to see things that are happening in our zip code. We want to see success. And with this program, people are seeing that success. And so now they're coming to the table. They're not the early adopters. We got them. They're on board. We, we have really got some momentum going here. So there is absolutely no doubt that this program will continue to be a model that others are going to learn from and is going to be key as we move into these discussions about water quality in southeast Minnesota, and what agriculture can continue to do to have an impact in the choices that we have in management practices. So certainly look forward to building on what we have going here in Olmsted County.
Well, I'm just going to chime in to say that it took leadership. It took leadership with this side of the dais, it took leadership on that side of the dais, because I remember, I remember having debates about the water nitrate level, and I remember Commissioner Tyne being very frustrated with what we were doing, and we had kind of a, a really heated debate at this, at the meeting about what to do and how to do it. And he kept saying, there's got to be a better way. There's got to be a better way. And you stepped up, and you stepped up with staff experts, came up with a plan. And when you brought it before the full board with the, with the opportunity you had with the ARPA funding, you, you accepted that we were willing to try, but didn't want to go full bore. And I think we also were prudent in saying, well, let's try it, see if it works. And you have really done a, a great job of doing the outreach and the recruitment and the demonstration. And so now when the EPA's come forward and the Department of Health is coming forward, it's one more time that, that Olmsted County can say, well, we've been thinking about this, and we've tried this, and this works. And as you're already saying, you've, your, your work is already being reflected in the state plans, so that it must feel good to all four of you for what you accomplished in, in partnering with our excellent staff and with, with county board members who were relentless. I'm laughing because I've sometimes have been called relentless on my projects, relentless on what you thought was needed, needed to happen. So I think it's kudos to the staff, board partnership to, to make this happen. So well done, well done. When do you anticipate the funds will be expended of the ARPA funds? Commissioner Wright is saying he has his prediction. What is yours?
I, I think maybe we might be able to go a year longer than that. I think last year was somewhere around a half a million. This next year, if things track, we'll probably get more to a million dollars. I think when we first thought of this, that it was kind of a million dollar a year program. I think it'll go a little bit beyond that, but you can never quite tell where the traction will really kick in, and a lot more people will come to the table. The other thing that we're exploring is where can we get additional dollars? I think it's probably important. The EPA petition will bring some dollars. I, I, I keep offering up our, our program as a model. I think we've demonstrated that it works and that the, the skeleton is there to utilize and, and move into other counties. And so we'll see, you know, where that goes. We continue to talk with MDA and MDH and, and, and Department of, or Police Control Agency and, and the DNR. So I think there'll be more coming forward here on this. I will continue to share at, at the PD Committee. But I think we've got some time here and that it's, but it's probably important that we, while we have local funds, that we try to access some, some others that we can, you know, match with local is probably the way to go. So I'm confident we'll get there, but yeah, we'll, we'll continue working hard at it.
One, one thing with matching funds, though, is like the, the benefit that we had was to be flexible in the way that we delivered the funding. And every time we share the story, it's a broken record of flexibility is what farmers need. And if we think of things that may be coming our direction for a nitrate fix, like I'm scared as a, I'm somewhat selfish, right? Because I'm a farmer, but then somewhat selfish as a SWCD, and someone wants to see nitrate reduced, and we'd be successful, then we need these models, which is exactly like what you said, like this works, this doesn't. And to have the data to back it up. And then I guess on the ramping up of the program, you know, a successful program ramps up, and as you get into it, the curve steepens. So how steep we make that curve is very important for the movement. But then also, obviously, we use up the funding faster, too. So, you know, see what I'm saying there is, we're going to push pretty hard to, if we doubled it last year, double it again next year. You can do the math, right? That's, that's my vision. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Well, kudos. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to, look forward to you at Budget Time. I'm sure we'll hear from you. It's time. I want to remind you that when we adjourn this meeting, we have another meeting to follow of the rail authority. That being said, it is time for committee reports, and I'm wondering if anyone has a committee report. Well, we did hear at Health and Human Services today that our Public Health Department is being surprised by some grant applications that were made before that were denied and suddenly are becoming viable. And one of the, the counter tools that was approved today, which is really just sort of surveying what's happening with tobacco stores, tobacco sales, it's not a compliance check, was funding that we hadn't anticipated, and now gave us the opportunity to move forward. And seeing two staff here, I'm wondering if there was a particular issue that you were, you were just observing today, or was there an, was there a particular issue you're here for today?
Observing.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Just observing.
Just observing. Well, you're most welcome. Most welcome to observe. All right. So if there are no committee reports, I promised you that I, I wanted to close off our regular meeting with a quote every, every time. And I thought with the Dean Martin Luther King celebration yesterday, maybe a Martin Luther King quote or two would be appropriate. And given the report we just had, I think I chose two that just fit pretty well. Two quotes, both short. Don't worry. First quote, "A genuine leader is not a super for consensus, but a molder of consensus." Second quote, "The time is always ripe to do it right." And I think we had an example of both of those in the report that we just had. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We moved and seconded to adjourn the regular meeting of the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.